Good evening. I'm Mayor Dean Brooke and I'd like to invite you to the August 4th, 2020, meeting of the regular city council meeting of Durango City Council. Those of you that might have been waiting, if the time is now 6:38, council's been in two other special meetings earlier this afternoon and just wrapped that up. So we appreciate your waiting around for us. With that, I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Certainly. Council Batine?
Here.
Councilor Noseworthy?
Present.
Councilor Yussup? Councilor?
Here. Sorry. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Present.
Mayor Brooke?
Yes, thank you, Amy. Appreciate it. And item three on our agenda is identification of any actual or perceived conflicts of interest for any of the items that are posted on our agenda this evening. Seeing none, we'll move on to public participation. And this segment of our council meeting is allocated for those members of the public to participate in our new forum being Zoom conference in our day of, in our policy during COVID. As usual, public participation will be accommodated for each individual in over a three-minute period. You will, if you're logged in, our facilitator, Mitchell, will allow you into the meeting and will give you a heads up at about two minutes so that we know that when your three-minute limit is about to be accomplished. With that, Mitchell, may I ask if there's any members of the public that have signed in for public participation this evening?
Good evening, councilors. My name is Mitchell Carter. I do see that we have someone in the attendee list that has raised their hand. So I am going to allow John to speak. John, you may need to unmute yourself, but you have three minutes.
Mayor Brooke, my name is John Simpson. I live at 1831 Crestview Drive. I want to bring your attention to the current concern I have for the budget process for 2021. Excuse me, Dean Brooke. The way things are looking, we should be planning now that the 2021 budget will not be completed by the end of the year. Luckily, the charter contemplates this and we can continue operating without a budget. The previous year's budget will simply be adopted for next year. I heard secondhand, the city attorney recommend rushing the 2020 budget through this year and not to take the advantage of the flexibility the charter gives us to adopt a budget. If he has a good reason to rush the budget, he should publicly disclose it. The 2020 budget was riddled with errors and errors were basic, like not including the 2019 sales tax and appropriating ordinance and not adding up a column of numbers correctly, unrelated to Julie Brown and COVID. In order to get control of the city finances, a city manager needs to be brought on immediately. I previously discussed this with council, the inability to make a decision. And you must find a way to solve this problem quickly. Kim and Barbara will be working with the new city manager the longest. And the best way to break any sort of deadlock may be to compromise in their direction. No more games trying to insert one of Iran's apprentices. If any, it does nobody a favor to shove somebody in there when Kim and Barbara only need one person in April to get rid of that bad decision. Ask yourself, what is best for Durango, not what is best for your friends. I continue to hear the Finance and Utilities Department advocating for a capital carryover process that should have been stopped long ago. They also spend a lot of time discussing expected revenue, which nobody has any control of. All the while, nobody has any idea how much money was in the bank eight months ago. And why isn't everyone working every possible minute on closing out the book in 2019? The incoming city manager needs to be set up for success. And if he doesn't have any idea how much money is in the bank or what we spent, there is no way to write a budget that addresses your goals. Finally, my concern with the management of the Public Works Department grows more every year. There's not been a clear direction given to the Utilities Department of what they should be doing. This whole concept of Ridge's basis water treatment plant is causing bad decision after bad decision to be made. Council must give staff a clear direction, which should be to maintain what we have and correct the punitive water rates.
Thank you. And Mitchell, any other comments?
We do have other people on the attendee list, but I do not see anyone else raising their hand. So if you are here to speak during public participation, please utilize the raise-hand function and I will allow you to speak. I do not see anybody else, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Mitchell. I appreciate it. And thanks for that public participation. Item five on our agenda, proclamations and presentations. We have none this evening. So with that, we move on to the review of the consent agenda.
Oh, Mayor, I believe. Yep.
Mayor Brooke, we have some public comments that we'll submit via email.
Perfect. And this would be the perfect time to do that. If you have, I best understand, two?
I have three.
Okay. And I wasn't sure if we'd insert those now or at the appropriate time, but this is the appropriate time. So thank you for that conclusion. Some people read those? Is that appropriate for you to read those, Amber?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So, Mitchell, if you can show me the clock like you did previously, that would be much appreciated. All right. Peter Schertz. And his address is 311 East 37th Street. City Council, thanks for developing the recent matrix as an attempt to resolve outstanding issues related to Animus River Trail North and nearby neighbors. As completioners for this project, please consider the following comments. For several years, I've requested a landscape plan for this mile of trail and have only heard excuses. Apparently, there is no plan for landscape other than the tree removal plan that clear-cut about 80 trees that our neighborhood once enjoyed. A few token trees have been planted, but this falls well short of complying with the city's land use development code. The city continues to treat landscaping as an afterthought and arrogantly considers itself above complying with its own guidelines. I am pleased to hear some of my neighbors finally negotiated a last-minute deal to have fencing installed to ensure privacy screening and discourage trespassing to the river. However, due to an off-leash dog problem, the fencing does not meet the city's wildlife-friendly commitment for this project. Enforcing the existing off-leash ordinance would go a long way to ensuring the enjoyment of the Animus River Trail by neighbors and trail users. To access neighborhoods and city parks was one of the original selling points for the Animus River Trail North a decade ago. Specifically, the Animus View Drive Mobile Home Park and the Pioneer Park neighborhoods have no meaningful access to the ART. Furthermore, Pioneer Park remains inaccessible from the Animus River Trail and the park is only accessible from State Highway 550, Main Avenue. There are many excuses for this failure. All are rooted in poor initial planning. Planning documents have disappeared. Maps, drawings, meeting notes, 32nd Street Bridge designs, PowerPoint presentations and public comments from well over a decade of planning for this trail are no longer available on the city's website. It is impossible to reference the original plan goals, public presentations and financial projections for this project without going through the burdensome Freedom of Information request. Currently, only promotional video and links to recent public meetings are available. Nearly a month ago, I asked why these documents were removed from the website and I still have not gotten a response. Could someone please let me know why these documents were taken down or where the public can access them? I am a trail advocate and use the River Trail almost daily. And at this point, project nears completion. It's difficult to ignore the avoidable shortcomings identified above. The recent matrix was a good exercise, however, the above issues remain unresolved. I urge city council to commit to finish this project and address the issues. Peter Schertz. We have one more on this topic. And this is from Tim Wolf. 3900 Silverton Street, Durango, Colorado, 81301. Dear City Council, since the onset of the Northern Art Construction, there have been ongoing problems and issues impacting many neighbors along the construction area. To name a few of these, a residential sewer line was broken by contractors flooding a neighbor's basement with raw sewage. An underground sprinkler system was torn up in another neighbor's yard. The pounding of massive pylons for trail wall within 15 feet of another home apparently caused structural damage to the house's foundation. Much of this has not been adequately mitigated by the city. Yet beyond this, there have been ongoing hostility by city staff with several impacted residents. Promises to homeowners north of 36th Street have been made and then broken by city staff. These include revegetation, the paving of Silverton Street and fencing. In good faith, I have repeatedly requested answers from staff and asked for meetings so that the issues can be resolved in an effort for cooperation. For the past few months, I have received little response from staff with one exception. Acting City Manager Amber Blake, in her email dated May 18th, wrote a response to my issues and requests. However, her responses were in such detail that they seem to be written by someone else. I'm guessing Scott Chisholm, the landscape architect heading the construction project, who is far more familiar with such details, wrote the comments. Unfortunately, these responses were filled with numerous misrepresentations and what appeared to be outright lies. For example, regarding revegetation, I asked what plans for revegetation would take place on the trail for the trees and shrubs that were cut down by my property on the trail. These included three 50-foot tall birch trees that were cut down. The responses were that these were Chinese elm trees, considered weed trees, and not worth replacing. Apparently, Scott and the city's landscape architect doesn't know the difference between Chinese elm and beautiful birch trees. Either that, or this is one misrepresentation meant to be an excuse not to revegetate along my property. Regarding paving, Kathy Metz has repeatedly stated that Silverton Street will be repaved as part of this trail project. In Amber's letter, this paving got changed to only partial paving, saying that paving would take place only where the roadway was disturbed. In fact, however, the roadway was changed and relocated beyond where the limited paving has now occurred. Before the paving got started, I repeatedly requested paving where all of the original roadway was disturbed and relocated. My requests were ignored. Regarding fencing along my property, this fencing proposed by the city has changed several times. Some time ago, I received a diagram of what was the latest proposal for fencing. This appeared to be inadequate to provide what it was intended to do. Following this, I requested an onsite meeting with staff to resolve the issue and address the issues of trespass privacy and a means for wildlife to access the river across my property. I did this so that we could come up with a resolution workable for all involved, and I still have no response from staff about this. The list of misrepresentations and excuses in Ms. Blake's letters goes on and on and can be viewed in my response letter dated to her June 17th. However, when I responded and pointed out the misrepresentations, I got no response from Blake or any staff member. That was over a month ago and still no response.
Amber, we have exceeded our time limit, so I would suggest that the rest balance of that letter be entered into the public record and appreciate your.
That will be entered into the record and there's one more comment, which is a crime report from Stan Mason. This item came in the day after the last council meeting on July 22nd through public comments. So I would like to read it because it was entered as public comment and then it will be attached to the record. City councilors, please find attached pertinent information related to the location of the homeless camp from the Purple Clips. I'm sorry I wasn't able to provide it yesterday. Clearly, this isn't the type of activity any Durango neighborhood wants or deserves. As this advances, the only local logical location is Troubled Youth Center located in Bodo Park at the jail. Your thoughts are appreciated. And attached to this is a record list of 91 incidents by nature. And this will be emailed to city council and attached to the record of this meeting. It's just a listing printout of the police calls.
And Amber, for the record, does he have a name and address for the record?
His name is, oh, where did it go? I mentioned his name at the beginning. It is, oh geez, Stan Mason, but there was no address included.
Very good. Thank you so much. Any other written correspondence that we should, okay. With that, thank you for your efforts. And with that, we move on to the consent agenda. And we would start with the reading of the consent agenda. Amy, can you help us out? Amy, if you're available, we're ready for the reading of the consent agenda.
Sorry about that. I was muted.
All right. Not a problem.
Item 6.1 and 6.2 have been removed. It has been requested that additional information be added to each of those sets of minutes. Both sets of minutes will be placed on the consent agenda at the next city council regular meeting for final consideration. Item 6.3 through 6.6 are discussion and possible action items. 6.3 concerns a letter of support for the Durango Arts Center and the Durango Creative District submission of a national endowment for the arts, Art Town Grant in support revenue, excuse me, to support renovation efforts of the Durango Arts Center building. 6.4 concerns resolution R. 2019 authorizing an additional appropriation to the Open Space Parks and Trails Fund for Durango Mesa Park. Item 6.5 concerns a submission of a rural economic development initiative grant application to support the Southwest Colorado Accelerator Program for entrepreneurs and the Economic Develop Alliance Remote Worker Program. 6.6 concerns the approval of resolution R. 2020 authorizing additional appropriation to the General Fund of CDVG funds on behalf of Homes Fund, Inc. Item 6.7 is a request for public hearing to receive public testimony and consider a conditional property lease to St. Mark's Church through its Neighbors in Need Alliance for the establishment of a homeless sheltering area on city-owned property adjacent to Green Mount Cemetery. And the proposed date for that is August 18th, 2020. Items 6.8 and 6.9 are final approval of ordinances. 6.8 is Ordinance O. 2029 granting various utility and other easements to Espero Apartments LLLP and Housing Solutions of the Southwest related to the development of a permanent supportive housing project and declaring an effective date. And item 6.9 is Ordinance O. 2010 authorizing a ground lease between the city and Espero Apartments LLLP and an amendment to the existing lease between the city with housing solutions of the Southwest and declaring an effective date.
Okay. Thank you, Amy Phillips. I appreciate it. And now is the time for any councilors to remove, ask for any of the consent agenda items to be removed for further consideration. And I would like to begin with 6.4, discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing additional appropriations to Open Space Parks and Trails Fund for Durango Mesa Park. Are there any other exclusions that councilors would like to make?
I believe there was a request by Mr. Hall to pull item 6.7 because it's been pushed into the future. Kevin, is that the case?
Yes, that is correct. We would like to pull that and change the date to September 1st.
Very good. And I see Councilor Noseworthy, yes?
Actually, Mayor, I just have a quick question. If you can, you can probably answer it, so I may not have to pull it. Can I just ask the question?
Certainly.
Okay, it's on item 6.3 and regarding this proposal for the Durango Arts Center and the Durango Creative District. I just want to be certain that this is, I read the documentation, but I want to be clear that this is not contingent or there won't be any discussion about a possible lodger's tax with this proposal.
Councilor Noseworthy, that is correct. There is no tie to current or future lodger's tax with this application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I understand 6.4 and 6.8 have been pulled for further comment.
6.4 has been pulled by you and 6.7 was pulled by Mr. Hall.
Okay, thank you for that correction. 6.7, which was the request for public hearing regarding, actually, property lease to St. Mark's Church for neighbors and for Nina. Yes. Okay. Well, my action on 6.4, I just wanted to.
Do we want to go ahead and do the consent agenda and then discuss 6.4? That's the way we usually do it?
We can move ahead with approval of the consent agenda less 6.4 and 6.7. So moved, I hear.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councilor Noseworthy? Yes. Councilor Batine?
Yes.
Councilor Yussup?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Brooke?
Yes. Okay, so moving on to item eight, removed consent agenda items, beginning with 6.4. My interest in pulling that was to talk about the letter that has been prepared in support of a GOCO funding request for the Durango Mesa Park. And perhaps I can have interim city manager Blake discuss the intent of that letter and what would be done if we actually achieved funding from GOCO and how that would be used in lieu of the money that would be appropriated via this resolution.
Yes, I'm happy to, Mayor Brooke. So the request for consensus on the letter for in support of the GOCO application, as we discussed previously with the council, there is a grant cycle with GOCO with some new money that's related to, there's $10 million available for open space acquisition grant applications. And this grant application, our Parks and Rec Director Kathy Meck has confirmed with GOCO that this is an application that would be well-received and supported by GOCO. And we are seeking a letter of support for an application of funding for land acquisition, which is the 1A parcel that is shown on the map. That is concept. It is not the exact surveyed area. So I want to make sure you know that that is not the fine detail of the parcel, but it will complete the Horse Gulch trail system and the Horse Gulch open space. So that's city 1A that you see on your screens now. Should the city receive the award from GOCO, that additional fund, that funding that comes from this grant application will be used with money that we are seeking appropriation of this evening for the acquisition of that property. After we move forward with the acquisition of 1A, the remaining funds per the new process with the capital improvement programs, the council would reappropriate those funds to move forward, should they wish, with the Durango Mesa project in 2021 budget under 1, for 1B. So Councilor Noseworthy had asked, will the money be rolling forward? And this is for a project to acquire open space parcel 1A. And once projects are completed per the new CIP process, that project close out and there would be a new project for anything further.
So my understanding, though, Amber, is the 6.4 is actually just about the 1A funding. It has nothing to do with the GOCO letter. Is that going to be a separate request?
So this, the request is just consensus. This evening, there was a request for council consensus on a letter of support. And the timing is such that the grant application is due this Friday. And so.
Is that included in the 6.4? So 6.4 is a vote on the 1A funding and the GOCO letter?
The 6.4 is just the acquisition, the appropriation for the acquisition of 1A. However, with the timing of this, we wanted to make sure to discuss the letter because there were questions about what would happen with the funding should we receive the grant.
Okay, but you're not asking us for a vote on the letter right now?
Nope. All we're asking is for consensus on the letter this evening.
Okay, thank you.
So may I clarify, Amber?
Yes.
You just, if I heard you correctly, you just said that if the GOCO funding were available, then it sounded like you said that there would be, there would be freed-up funds for 1B. The council would have to determine that. But it would seem in my mind that those would be freed-up funds for anything related and the council would then make a decision. It wouldn't be prescribed as to what the council was expected to do with regard to 1B and any successful GOCO application.
That the council will appropriate funds in the 2021 budget and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has made their prioritization of the projects, of those priority projects. Durango Mesa is the number one project, but you are correct, the money will go back into the fund and will need to be re-appropriated because it's a separate.
Joint group came up with something higher that fit with these GOCO fundings. It could be used for that as well, the joint group rather than just the Parks and Rec.
The, with the Durango Mesa Foundation and the county and the city? Is that what you just said?
2015 projects, 2015 sales tax.
Um, the, this, there's no 2015 money in this project.
Okay, 2005 money then. Okay. So I also kind of wanted to make a correction for the public because you said council will appropriate in the budget.
Has the opportunity, will need.
Yes, we have an opportunity to discuss that, yes. I just want to make sure that I've made a decision.
Will need.
Well, let's bring it back to the original purpose. And I just felt it was important to understand that we could get additional funding through this incredibly great opportunity. And then that would free up some money for whatever purpose council decides is appropriate within the guidance. And so we are to comply with the schedule that's been proposed to us by the Durango Mesa Park Foundation. We are trying to commit funds via this action this evening to that purpose that we might also get, that we're also jointly trying to get GOCO funds for as well. So with that, I'll ask for a motion relative to 6.4 in its stated purpose.
Make a motion to approve item 6.4 on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
So moved in second. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councilor Yussup?
Yes.
Councilor Batine?
Yes.
Councilor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Broke?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to item 6.7. Is that, Kevin, the nature of that is it is we just want to continue this or should we take action? There's no action required?
Yeah, you're essentially setting a date for the public hearing. Unfortunately, when we did the agenda doc at the end of last week, we thought it would be on the 18th. We got a request yesterday from the proponents to push that back. I think they want to be super clear that their project is not related to the Espero Permanent Supportive Housing Project. And there is a little bit of overlap in terms of the public's knowledge on these two projects. It's not entirely clear the difference, but they're quite different. So they asked that we just push this back until later, until the Espero issue has essentially all been settled. I believe tonight will be the last action of council on Espero. They asked to push it past the 18th. I think that will give them more time to prepare their proposal that you'll be hearing then when we have the public hearing, which is currently being recommended for September 1st as opposed to what you see in the agenda docs, which show the 18th of August.
So what you're proposing is no action on this this evening. In fact, it would be officially withdrawn from the agenda and re-agendized at a later date?
No, forgive me for not being clear. So when we do a request for public hearing, that is a necessity to get the publications out there and the notices out there. So what I'd like to see happen is an approval on a request for public hearing. Just change the date from August 18th to September 1st.
Got it. Thanks for that clarification. And in which case, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we change the date to September, what's the date, September 4th? No.
September 1st.
September 1st for this hearing. And then move to accept all other materials as presented. Second.
It's been moved in second. And maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councilor Yussup?
Yes.
Councilor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Batine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Broke?
Yes. And thank you, Kevin, for helping us through that and clarifying that intent.
Mr. Hall, can I interrupt briefly?
Sure, Chris.
I beg the council's permission to be excused from the rest of the meeting. I do have a business meeting to attend. I realize the rest of the agenda is non-controversial and hope to be able to go to that.
Very good. Thanks. Noted, duly noted. And yeah, good luck in your business ventures. Thanks. So with that, we move on to public hearing. Item 9.1, legislative and policy-related hearings. We have none this evening. Nine point two was a deducional hearings. We have none this meeting. And items brought to us by our city attorney, we have none this evening except for the introduction of ordinances, item 11 on our agenda and 11.1, which is an ordinance for purpose of amending the zoning of real property located within the city of Durango, Colorado pursuant to chapter 21, sections 6, 3, 2, and, or 6 dash 3 dash 2 dash 3 and 2 dash 1, 1 dash 2 dash 6 of the Code of Ordinances, city of Durango, and declaring an effective date. It's known as the GIA rezone. Dirk, do you have any further discussion on that issue?
I don't. This is a follow-up to the hearing that we had at the last meeting where they were doing the boundary adjustment, as you recall. So anything to add?
I should note that this is not a public hearing, so we will not open a public hearing on this, but it would entertain any comments from council. So you know?
Yeah, I apologize, I don't have an ordinance number for that. So these next two ordinances will be the next two numbers in, in order. I didn't get a chance to get those.
Appropriate sequence, yeah, okay. With that, I'd entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
I would make a motion to approve the ordinance for purposes of amending the zoning of real estate located within the city of Durango, Colorado pursuant to chapter 27, section 6 dash 3 dash 2 dash 3 and 2 dash 1 dash 2 dash 6 of the Code of Ordinances and declaring an effective date for the GIA rezone. And if there's any other information I need to add to that, so be it.
Nicely stated. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Nozworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Broke?
Yes, thank you. That moves us on to item 11.2, an ordinance for purposes amending the zoning of real property located within the city of Durango pursuant to chapter 27, sections 6 dash 3 dash 2 dash 3 and 2 dash 1 dash 2 dash 6 of the Code of Ordinances, city of Durango, and declaring an effective date. This is known as the Weymeyer rezone. And do I have any further discussion from Dirk? Dirk? And or questions of council?
Again, similarly, this is a boundary adjustment item to avoid split zoning, so it's similar to the last one.
Thank you, thank you. And I, I would entertain a motion.
I would so move as what you spoke when you introduced it and add that it's the Weymeyer rezone.
You're getting tongue tied later in the evening, I can tell. And I accept that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Nozworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Broke?
Yes, thank you. With that, we move on to item 12 of our agenda, which is administrative, brought to us by our own interim city manager, Amber Blake. And we have, for starters, a city update. Amber?
Thank you, Mayor Broke. I'm going to share my screen briefly here. So this evening, I have preliminary estimated sales tax for July. Again, this is preliminary data. And as you can see from our table here, as of August 4th, the preliminary estimated city sales tax represents a 7% reduction over 2020 estimates based on June sales. These same projections as previously presented, except that we had previously in the original projections that we had estimated July at a 60% reduction. The preliminary reductions reflect a 7% decrease. And we have adjusted the remainder of the year to 15% decrease. This falls in line more with what we are seeing related to our sales tax revenues during these unprecedented times. When we adjust all of those numbers together, we're looking at a 13% decrease overall in the general fund on sales tax projections. That's a decline of 1.9 million in the general fund and a total of 3.7 million for all sales and use taxes. And that's what I have this evening for you on our sales tax preliminary numbers. Related to other financial items, I am seeking consensus from the council this evening on what we would let, what they, what you would like to direct staff to work with Ide Bailey on in terms of a scope of services for a forensic exam and ICE exam, forensic audit and ICE exam. I would like to know specifically from the council if you would like to have staff request a scope of services to, we'll start out with the ICE examination. Would you like the ICE examination to occur concurrently with the forensic exam or sequentially?
So Amber, I, I'm challenged by this. You know, you put out a little bit of data, very little about what this conversation was going to be. And I think that, just for me personally, I would like you to ask those questions in writing so that we can contemplate them and analyze them. This is for me, just my thought. And come back with a more informed decision or a more thoughtful decision about how this works. And I'd also like to know the ramifications of, of all these things, the cost of them, the, the timing of them, if we do whatever you're asking this way, this way, this way, what are the ramifications of that? So, thank you.
So I was trying to get that information for you and Ide Bailey has come back and said, we need to know what they want before we prepare scope of services. I emailed with them again today and said, well, how about you prepare scope of services both ways, one sequentially, one not sequentially, one with all funds and one with just the general fund? And so that we can provide the council a menu of options that you can then choose from because you will have numbers, you'll know the fiscal impact of this and the timing. So I have reached out on that today. I reached out with them again this morning and I had communications with Ide Bailey.
That's great, because I don't think we could make a decision without that kind of information.
I agree. If there's any information that the council can provide, if there's other information you'd like me to seek, addition to concurrently or sequentially on the ICE, all of the funds, and then the number of years, if you think of any additional information, please let me know. The number of years was the item that Ide Bailey reached out again and said, if they can give us that number, that will help significantly in being able to provide you a cost estimate.
Barbara Nozworthy?
Thank you.
Decisions without the, the costs and the, and the timeframe. Like, does it take longer to do five years and is it five times the cost? I don't know.
I think that's, and I think, Amber, I, I concur with your letter back to them that if we can arrive at a couple more specifics, perhaps the years as well as the sequential versus concurrent thoughts? And perhaps Barbara has some thoughts in that regard?
I, I do. And, and thank you, Amber, for this effort. I would like to see it done concurrently. I think that the sooner we can have this assessment, both from a forensic audit and from a, the ICE evaluation, I think it helps inform the public and our own actions of if anything we need to do. So I'd like to see it concurrently. I'd like to see all enterprise funds reviewed, and I've sent this in writing to all of council, I'd like to see all enterprise funds looked at and all funds that receive significant capital improvement projects. That, that would be the Parks and Rec with its dedicated sales taxes, the utilities. The general fund also gets some Parks and Rec. I'd also like to see the office of the city manager reviewed and also the, the finance department. The answer I don't have, because I do need the information that Counselor Baxter talked about, is the sense of how far back to go. I recognize that everything comes with a cost and I'm, that I'm not able to provide you with, but I, I would like the departments I've laid out in both writing and now to be reviewed and then to do it simultaneously.
And I want to get Counselor Youssef's thoughts, but, but my reaction to that is too, that we should compare that, how far back with the, how far back the CBI actually investigated in their, in their investigation.
They went back 12, 17 years.
They went to 2009. That's just where it's at, because they-
So that's, that's fairly extensive and as you say, everything comes with a cost. Counselor Youssef, you have any thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor Broke, I appreciate it. I, I would like to get it done as soon as possible. So concurrently is very attractive to me, but I think having a solid understanding of the costs and understanding what it means to go into all the other departments would, would behoove us so we could get that information quickly.
And I'll weigh in then. It was, I concur with Counselor Youssef and Counselor Nozworthy that concurrent is, given the timetable that was described for this, that that might not be completed until this November 15th is what I recall is the date that the, could be a reasonable timeframe to complete a thorough forensic audit for even the minimal scope of work. I think we should advise them to give us price tag for concurrent so we can get on with that. There's, you know, it's, is meant to advise us as a council and, and our, if, if there is any role, you know, how, as the case moves forward as well. So I think we'd like to have that information as quickly as possible. Barbara?
Thank you. I just saw my note, so please forgive me. The other two departments that I asked that be looked at would be multimodal because it also has access to CIP funds. And then however the management of the SURF fund is handled, I'd like to have that reviewed as well, please.
And then Dean, I will say that as long as, for me, I agree concurrently sounds great because it gets done more quickly. My only concern was if there was a significant drawback to doing it that way, then we would want to know that.
Exactly. I, I, I concur with that. At present, I don't see any drawbacks, but if there are any, it's, then I'd like to know what they might be exact as well. So it's quite the menu list that we've offered them, but I think if, if they can start to in, you know, I think what we heard from them was that they don't know, this forensic audit would be conducted on an hourly basis. And certainly, that's a fairly unlimited scope of work. And, you know, I, I would like to know what that potential range is, what they might be getting into. I don't think they can give us a specific quote, obviously. They said they wouldn't, so we just need to understand that. And Barbara, yes?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. You know, I think that we, we may be mistaken if we're assuming a forensic audit for all of the departments in case that I mentioned. I think we need to narrow down specific departments. It might be the reviewing the finance, it might be reviewing the office of the city manager, the general fund. But I think when we narrow, when we also determine what ICE audits might take place, that's where we could narrow the larger, particularly having them look at the, the use of capital improvement projects as the forensic gentleman said. So it wouldn't be forensic, it wouldn't be forensic audit for all departments, there would be a blend between the ICE and forens-
But thank, thank you for that clarification. As I understand, ICE is not actually an audit, it's a compilation of recommended practices that would be implemented. And the audit is the audit. So, and that's what we're trying to get, wrap our hand around, how deep do they go and how far back do they go? In, in your suggestion that ICE might be practices that could be implemented throughout a number of our departments and, and that's a, that's a different price tag. So Amber, I might ask you on the, on the ICE component of this scope of work from our auditors, have, they have defined, could they, that, that could be more easily accomplished on a department by department? And as I understood the presentation, they actually, they would make recommendations for virtually the entire city government in that ICE, in the basic ICE evaluation.
Correct. So the ICE examination is an internal controls examination and they would look at all of the city's internal controls.
Amber, if I could, I'd just ask you to turn up the volume just a hair.
That they are, it's an ICE evaluation, so it's an internal controls examination. So it looks at all of the city's internal controls, citywide, all of those processes and procedures going on. They did provide us a quote on the ICE exam concurrent and not concurrent. It was 7,500 concurrent and $30,000 in, by itself as a standalone. So we do have that number. I will reach out to Ide Bailey to see what they can provide us for the study session next week. Devin Schmidt will be, we will add an item. So far, right now, we have CIP process and policy and fund balance policy. We'll add an item for discussion on the ICE examination and forensic exam. And the council will be able to go through with what's provided by Ide Bailey and we can move forward with this process.
Thank you, Amber. And does that answer your question, Barbara, as well? Thank you. And Amber, if I could ask you to somehow turn up the volume just a hair? We love hearing you and we'd like to hear you a little more volume. So with that, I, I, I hope that gives the auditor a little more information to proceed with and it's a pretty big menu, but it, what I heard from Barbara was not necessarily forensic examination in every department to drill down into each and every department and fund. But, but to take whatever course, I mean, I think as these things go, a forensic audit is that, to follow every lead. So the public should be, have comfort in the fact that we're instructing them to chase down any possible form of graphic corruption or misdeed on any, by any department in any, in any year. So with that, hopefully, there's no decision to be made here, but just advisory to city manager to get back and it sounds like we're going to hear again next week. So with that-
So I have a couple additional items with the, can you hear now?
That's much better, just as you did that closer to your mouth technique.
Okay. Perfect, sorry about that. All right. I have one, two other items on my update for council this evening. We, in 20, order 202007, the fire restriction order that was put into place earlier this year on May 20th, I will be working with the city attorney to rescind that executive order that was put into place after discussions with the fire chief today. There are 10 items that are criteria for fire restrictions that we reviewed together. These 10 restricted, or these 10 criteria are measured thousand hour time, fuel moisture content is 12% or less, seasonal energy release component is above the 80th percentile, three day mean building, burning index is above the 80th percentile, ignition component is 80% or above, fire danger rating adjective class is very high or extreme, fire occurrence is impacting available suppression resources, making adequate initial attack difficult, local area preparedness level is a three or above, the local areas receiving high occurrence of fires and human caused risk is expected to increase, fire adverse weather conditions and risks are predicted to continue, and then implementing of existing fire restrictions is not adequately reducing human caused fires. We are not meeting these criteria at this point in time, so it is time for us to rescind that order. That'll happen later this week. I will send the council an email when that is accomplished. We're just finalizing the language in the rescinding order. And I would like to let you know that the Board of County Commissioners today also adopted a resolution to rescind their fire ban as well. So we're falling right in line with the county. And then lastly, we had a meeting, staff had a meeting with the Niner School District today related to Buckley Park. And we had some great discussions with Dan Snowberger and Andy Burns. And we would like to, staff would like to add, request adding an item to the study session calendar on September 8th for a joint meeting with the Niner School Administration and School Board members at that study session to discuss Buckley Park and the city moving forward with how the city can ensure that we retain that as green open space and park for the city.
Excellent. That, and so what I heard is that that would be LA administration, that would be- Excellent. That, and so what I heard is that that would be LA Administration, that would be members of the school board as well?
Correct. And Dan will be getting back to me after his school board meeting this evening, if it will be the full school board or if it will be the chair and the member, the school board member that represents, is representing in the URA.
Excellent. Any discussion on that? Is that with the September 8th study session? I would welcome it. And any comments from council?
I was just confirming the date, September 8th. So that's the four o'clock. Okay, four o'clock.
Correct.
Okay.
Four o'clock six. Yeah. I'm not sure what else that impacts on our agenda, but that's certainly timely, critical and public interest. So, thank you, Amber. Anything else?
And that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you very much.
Actually, I'd like to bring up the letter, the letter of support for the GOCO request and under your, your section and ask council if they've had an opportunity to review it and if, if we have a thumbs up, no formal motion, but just a concurrence or more importantly, any disagreements or edits to that letter. Seeing none, I, I intend to sign that letter and authorize the city staff to, to go get some money for us. So thanks. Okay. Any other questions, Amber, for anything else that we got going on at this moment in time? Okay. Well, then we'll move on to the next section, which is council reports and actions, which is discussion of possible action items involving or related to City Manager search process. We will also have an opportunity to talk about anything else and, but I, I can begin with an intended process here if I can, yes, Amber?
Do I need to, I'm assuming I need to jump off for discussion related to this? Is that the most appropriate thing for me to do?
These are general scheduling items, but if you'd like to, if you feel comfortable in stepping out for a moment, we can, we can move on.
Of course.
That sounds appropriate, just in an appearance of any impropriety.
And Mayor, I just asked Dave Krings to sign in, so he should be joining the meeting.
Excellent, excellent. He probably didn't think we'd get to it this expeditiously, so.
I gave him a heads up that it was moving along nicely. So he, I think he knows that.
Okay. And for the council to, while we're waiting for David Krings to, who is our consultant for the City Manager search, I might allow this opportunity for anybody else that wants to talk about council reports and actions of a normal nature that has occurred during the past couple of weeks. Reports and actions by Kim, do you have any thoughts to share with us?
I had my first Zoom office hours yesterday. That was Monday, right? Yes. And that was very interesting and it worked out really well. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that on August 17th at eight, eight AM, I have another Zoom office hour scheduled and you can email me at kimbaxter@durango.gov.org to have me send you an invite. And if that's not in the convenient time, I'm happy to set up another time too. So just let me know. The other thing is that I went to the Infrastructure Advisory Board meeting last night and Councilor Yusuf and I had discussed a couple of things about the water system study update and the water master plan update. So I thought I'd mention those. The water system update is an analysis and assessment of our existing system. So how well is it working? Where do we have challenges? What might we need to repair? What's in good order? That is ongoing at this point in time. So we should be getting some finalized information about that in the near future. And then the 2020 Water Master Plan is is a plan designed to answer what are our system demands and projections of our needs in the future. And so it would have impacts on the analysis of a water treatment plant or a water treatment capability increase, whether that be ridges basin water treatment plant or the capabilities of, and/or the capabilities of College Mesa. So, and the design as well as the land acquisition costs and all needed infrastructure. So those are the two, kind of the two top things right now that the Infrastructure Advisory Board is working on. And they've also been working on proposed capital improvement projects for 2021, a site selection for the ridges basin water treatment plant report, drought management plan, forest health and source water quality update and drought monitoring for 2020. So just to let you all know what's going on in infrastructure.
Can I ask you a question?
Melissa, yes.
Ask your question. So thank you, Mayor Proton Baxter. Can you tell me, so you said that we should expect the study to be done soon on the current plant, correct? Yes?
On the current, our current facility, yes.
Okay. And then for the study for the master plan where they're trying to determine our water needs going out, how far are they looking?
I'm not certain. We should be looking at the draft in October.
Okay.
So I'm, it, but it's a pretty far ranging situation. I believe it's, you know, 20 to 50 years. So.
Okay, good.
Not in five.
Okay, good.
I'm reminded we purchased water anticipating 40 years of growth. So, oh, but would be at least can come answer it with the amount of water we've purchased. So, yeah, I see that David Krings is available for our discussion on City Manager search process. So with that, maybe definitely the rest of council will have an opportunity to talk about reports and actions, but we'll invite Dave to our meeting and good after, good evening, David. And thanks, thanks to have you, thanks for attending our regularly scheduled meeting of Durango City Council. And I thought what I would do is generically talk about our process here and get your, your thoughts on it. We're in the formative stages of how we move forward and engage stakeholders, staff and the general public. So with that, what's, what's been, what I've identified as possible methods of engagement are to have a Zoom conference with the department heads and the executive team leaders to talk to each of our named council, excuse me, City Manager candidates, not candidates, but finalists. And have each of our department heads interview them sequentially and followed by stakeholder interviews. And we'll, tomorrow and the next couple of days, we'll be identifying the stakeholders within our community that either either have expressed interest or we have previously identified as partners with the city in some form and have them be involved in a stakeholder interview process with each of the named finalists in sequence. So that would be a Zoom conference first with one candidate, followed by in sequence each of the other candidates. And then ultimately that we'd have a, and this will probably be in the next two to three weeks, I would suggest in a general public forum, which should also be a sequential opportunity for general public to just be involved in a conference, you know, meeting similar to what we're having tonight. And I have a three minute question, answer period of each of the candidates in sequence. So you'd have to ask a question of one candidate while they're available. Then we bring in the other candidate. You can ask a question of that candidate and, and so forth. What we are, have not arrived at at this point is we have not named any additional finalists in our, in our City Manager search. And as of this evening, we have no new names to announce. So that's sort of the synopsis and I look to Dirk, Dirk as well as David Krings, our consultant, to talk about the efficacy of that kind of a interview process.
I'll defer to David on that point.
Okay. And, and also get comments from City Council. We haven't really, since this concept has been drafted, this is our opportunity as council to talk about methodologies and any revisions to this particular concept. So. David, do you have any thoughts?
What we're wrestling with is how to have a community meeting or a series of community meetings in the, on the era of COVID-19. If this was not, if we weren't dealing with this physical separation issue, we would probably have a, a, a community wide meet and greet. And, you know, people could come in, ask whatever questions they want, meet the, the finalists and, and then give their feedback either through us or through, or directly to the council members. With the separation, it makes it much more difficult. I, I know from talking to you, Mayor, that you want to give adequate notice to the general community when perhaps a Zoom meeting or some kind of virtual meeting could be set up for community participation. That, you know, it, it could have that as a separate thing. We, we had also talked about having separate meetings, one for the staff members, particularly the department heads, another one for your stakeholders, the various groups that you work with on a regular basis or individuals you work with on a regular basis. One option, you could do all of that in one meeting. And then you'll have, have us report back to you. Or I, if you want to do it separately, like we talked about, normally the, the department head slash staff input is done separately with pledge often, often by our group that we'll take the comments and report them faithfully back to the council, but we're not going to disclose who said what with the approval of the, of the council. You know, when you have a, a group of department heads, a group of any kind, maintaining confidentiality is difficult. But nevertheless, we could make that pledge and have, have it done that way. I would not suggest that council members sit in and, in a meeting with, with the staff. As far as your community leaders and with the the stakeholders, those two meetings. If you wish, I think you could reasonably combine the two. I, I don't know if there's a particular advantage on one or the other. But you're certainly able to do that. Another thing that I would strongly advise is that none of these groups take a vote. They should give you their input and you should consider their input. But you're elected to take the vote. You're the ones that will be deciding who would be the best city manager for, for Durango. And that's my very strong recommendation. I don't know. I'd be happy to take any questions, Mr. Mayor or, or from anybody.
To start with, Mayor, David, thank you for that, that thought. And obviously just all just to have an opportunity just today to respond to this initial concept. And I think David's thought of combining stakeholder and general public in one meeting might be efficient for, for both the stakeholders and the general public as well as our time and in the applicant's time and the candidate's time. So take that into account. The, the separate Zoom conference would be, as you suggested, a more confidential meeting, just with the department heads. The council would not be in attendance. However, we would take comments and formulate the method of accepting those comments from, from staff. Similarly, we need to figure out a way and just anticipate that there will be either a comment sheet or a method of receiving comment from the general public as well as stakeholders to advise council as to their perception of our finalists. So that we can use that as we, as we always do to inform our decision. So, yeah, I, I think moving forward, the idea, and I throw this out to council, establishing that that department head meeting separate from, and then making the second meeting, the stakeholder meeting perhaps from depending on how many finalists we ultimately identify. There would be like a three o'clock to five o'clock block for those, the stakeholders to review our finalists and then open it up to the general public at five o'clock into the evening after work hours for the general public. Seems to be a methodology that might, or a concept that might work. Council, any thoughts?
I, I actually, I think it's a good idea, what you're suggesting, Mayor, but I think perhaps it's long. Were you suggesting three to five and then five to?
In my memo, I said five to seven, anticipating having no idea how many members of the general public might be in, in it.
Yeah.
Which is the difficulty of a Zoom conference. You don't want to exclude anybody. If we limit it to a three minute period like our normal city council sessions, that could go on till midnight.
I, I appreciate your desire to be inclusive and I absolutely agree with that. I'm wondering though, for the candidate's sake, if we might hold those on different days at a minimum. I think four hours back to back of answering questions could get exhausting.
I agree. And I, and I would be, that would be that at a minimum, I believe.
I support Councilor Yusuf's concept that, that the two meetings could be on different days, but I do appreciate Dave's suggestion of combining the stakeholders and the public. Give us, that way we only have two days of meetings rather than three, which might actually put us out another week. I think we could, we could much more effective and efficient that way. So that would be my.
And I kind of thought I was agreeing to that. I apologize. I'm agreeing with what Councilor Mayor Proten Baxter is suggesting. To, it just, if we can get it in, it'd be nice.
As, as I defined it, you know, we would have stakeholders, but your suggestion that stakeholders and general public are one and the same. And, and there's no differentiation. The stakeholders attend the general public session and that's, that's it. I, you know, I, I think our biggest obligation as council personally is to the general public. Obviously it's, and it would in that same forum allow any stakeholder to pose a question in similar format, just altogether. So I think that would be, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying and I think that is certainly workable and Dave, you agree with that as well?
Yeah, I, I do. One thing we'll have to, to work out is that how the questions would be posed. We need to, you know, make sure that that only lawful questions be, be put before the, the candidates and somehow between me and Dirk and, and whoever, we should be able to, you know, vet the questions before they're actually posed.
Perhaps that's a methodology that as they, before they enter, they're allowed into the Zoom, as is customary now, to be monitored and allowed in, they could be, their question could be, they could ask that of the, of the monitor. And I see Barbara has a thought as well.
I have a question for, for Dave. If we do it on, if you do the, the finalists on separate days, how do you, you know, what's the issue of one, the, the candidate going second, having the advantage of having heard the first candidate's answers to questions?
Yeah.
And so I guess I, I'm, you know, I'm familiar with other institutions that they're in a, in the real world, they're in a backstage in a green room and then they're, you know, asked the questions that, you know, and not have. And then they're, you know, asked the questions that, you know, and not having heard the answers. So I'd like to get your thoughts on the advantage of who goes first versus who goes second.
Well, frankly, I
Go ahead.
As you know, I've had city manager-like positions in my previous life. And I tell you, most every city manager or county administrator or public servant in general has been under the gun for four-hour periods and should be able to handle that. Now, it's, remember, it's a two, well, I, I, I still suggest just do it once and get it over with. And, but if, you know, now how are you going to separate it? I don't know. Are these things immediately made public? Because you can, you can, they are, okay, I see Dirk saying they are.
Yeah.
And I don't know how.
I might offer some, a thought to Barbara's question. I think here, you know, if we have these in sequence, candidate A asks a series of questions, then we invite candidate B in there. Perhaps in terms of confidentiality, we, I think we, you know, and I looked at Victor or somebody in IT to see if we can preclude that candidate from participating in the previous portion of the questioning so that they aren't privy to the questions that were asked the prior candidate that evening. And so I think we have a
I would disagree, though, Mayor, because unless they're close to simultaneous, you may not be yourself, but there will be discussion out in the community. And to Dave's point, I guess I would expect somebody to be able to hold their own for several hours under, you know, we have city, we have city council meetings that long, so.
Melissa, one second, but my intent, just to put it in the picture, is these would be candidate A for one hour block, question and answer from stakeholders and general public, then move right immediately into candidate B. So that's not a day or two in between. It's exactly that. And candidate B would be precluded from listening.
Thank you for that clarification.
That's how I see it unfolding, and if that answers your question.
I think that that would work out great. And then, but then in the, you know, if you just had them back to back on the same day, that's fine. I was just, certainly, we have six, seven-hour city council meetings, but we aren't being, as candidates, shot questions for a four-hour period of time all at once. And I just think that for them to be able to be as responsive as they may want to be, you know, to break it up. So for example, to have department head and executive team interviews on one day with all finalists and then to have the stakeholder interviews on all day, back to back with all finalists. That would alleviate potentially the concern for anybody getting preferential treatment. They're all on the same day, but it breaks it up for the candidates such that, or for the finalists, excuse me, whomever those individuals might be, such that they can.
So Melissa, my ask, where in that picture do you see the general public having opportunity?
Well, I was, I was, I was tracking where we were going as a council with combining the stakeholders with the general public.
Okay.
So that would be, let's just say, let's just call that one on a Wednesday. So you could, you could go from three to five and then five to seven. You had to go from seven, I mean, I don't know, you could figure out the timing.
Actually, I think what Dave's suggestion was, was just to have it all general public effectively. And in that, in that forum, stakeholders would be allowed to participate and identify themselves as a stakeholder, just as
Correct.
In the same timeframe and in the same sequence as.
Dean, we're saying the same thing. The only thing I'm not combining it with is department heads.
I think that's a separate thing that also doesn't have the participation of city council as well. And perhaps we can engage David to facilitate that discussion with the department heads and then receive comment to council from that meeting. So, yeah, I think we're, I think I understand that I can rewrite this in terms of what I've heard this evening and distribute that to council and slaven for thoughts. I think our big, our next big decision is, we did have an executive session earlier this afternoon for the purpose of interviewing two additional candidates. In that session, there was no results, no decisions made, as there can not be decisions made in an executive session. So we need to have further discussion regarding what we heard today. And I'm not, it's not a topic for, I think we need to reconvene in executive session to finalize our discussions around that potential naming or not of additional finalists.
And I agree with your synopsis of our executive session there. And I think maybe in this forum, would this be a time to discuss when we might have that continued executive session?
I believe it is, yes. And there's, to start that conversation, there's some level of urgency, obviously, to maintain our existing candidates as well as come to resolution on this entire process. So should we attempt to do a Google time? You want to have Karen poll us in the morning about available times and dates or make that a discussion for this evening?
Well, I think with Councilor Bettin not in attendance at this point, it might be a good idea for a Google poll. Sorry, I'm like, it's like a Google poll. But if we could do it tomorrow and or Friday, I think that's imperative that we get this done this week before we head into any interview processes with our public and others.
And we have to notice it.
We have point of notice requirement, yeah. And I am actually not working Friday, but I might get Crystal to do it, so.
Well, Thursday, we could notice on Thursday. We only need 24 hours.
Notice Thursday.
Could we notice tomorrow and also be able to discuss on Thursday?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were noticing on Thursday for a Friday meeting.
Thursday meeting, we have time to notice.
We need 24 hours, so if we're going to do, yeah, we need, so yes.
Okay. I might also suggest, I know Kevin Hall is listening in. And there was scheduling required by, fell in his lap to organize the department heads. My original anticipated schedule would be their normal meeting, the department head and the executive team's meeting from, I believe, two to three on, or one to three on Monday, that would be this coming Monday. If we don't identify, if we don't come to resolution on this issue to inform staff to who the potential finalists are, we might need to defer that Zoom conference to the following Monday, which is the most convenient time for, an organized time for all those individuals to join us or join in a presentation. So that's the only level of urgency, the immediate scheduling issue that we might need to.
I'll see if we can make it happen this Monday.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
At this point, I have no reason not to proceed with that intent, okay? And if we pull the plug, we can pull the plug. But otherwise, I think staff has been given the directive to utilize that time next Monday for this purpose. All right? That's all I have on that. Any other discussion that council would like to have? Or questions from David?
Well, one thing, though, I will make time on Thursday. When you set the time, I'll be available.
Okay. Okay, well, I appreciate that, as always, yeah.
And David, you would also be participating in the Monday call if we're assuming that that goes forward this coming Monday? You would be the honest broker to report back to us in confidence or in the employee's confidence, just the overall assessment?
Yes, I will. I have to get a little bit more training on how to handle the Zoom stuff, but yes, I'll, I'll do that.
Thank you.
If I can do it, you can do it, David. We have confidence, total confidence in you, so. Okay, well, with that, I think that ends that conversation, David. If you need, if you've got other things to do this evening in Cincinnati, Ohio, feel free to press on with that. And thank you for joining us again.
I just saw the end of the Indians and Reds play and the Reds lost. So I really have to go and got to mourn that a little bit.
We'd join you, but I don't know. It's, that's a different world that you live in, so. Yeah. All right. Thank you, David. With that, we ought to finalize our session of our council reports and actions. And Kim had an opportunity. Melissa, did you have any other thoughts?
Yes, so I had a meeting with the community, the Creative Economy Commission, sorry. And that, just a quick update on that, look at my page here, was we had, they're scheduling a retreat and in that retreat, on one of the topics that they're going to talk about is revising the criteria for public art. I just thought that was interesting. They haven't been, that discussion hasn't been touched and or revised in a long time. And they want to give that some real serious thought. So I'll bring that back to council once we get that. They also talked about the budget for the coming year. And they all recognized that, you know, we all know we're in a pandemic right now. But we also recognize that we haven't made any new contributions to public art in quite some time as a city. So we did have that discussion. Any, any, any new public art project, if it was budgeted going forward, would go under capital improvements. But it was noted that really, truly, the majority of the budget for public art is for maintenance. And it's about $24,000 a year. So just a little update on that. And then we had a really good strategy and long-term finance committee meeting. And the, I'm expecting that Amber will be presenting some recommendations to council from that. She might even provide an update for that as well, just because she's here too. But we talked about the reserve policy. And the chair is going to be sending a recommendation to council for a reserve policy from them. And as well, we talked about the capital improvement plan, our process. And we went through it at length and they were very, very helpful. And I am going to ask you, Amber, to weigh in, because Amber was actively involved and so was Devin. So, but it was really good discussion. They had excellent feedback. Amber, can you weigh in?
Yes, definitely. So the Long-Term Strategy and Finance Advisory Board will have two recommendations for the council. The first is on a reserve balance policy. That recommendation they did complete last night and that will be coming forward to council this week and will be part of the study session agenda for the following week, for next week, which is the 11th. And Devin Schmidt will be reviewing that with council. We will invite the Long-Term Strategy and Finance Advisory Board to attend that study session so that you can have direct contact and ask the questions to your advisory board. And then the other item that was on the agenda was the capital improvements process and policy. And the board is still finalizing, there were a number of edits and changes that were made to both the CIP worksheet as well as the process policy. And the board wanted to take an additional afternoon or so to review those changes and ensure that they, all of them were included. And they will be finalizing their recommendation to the council. And that will be brought forward with the agenda documentation for the meeting on the 11th as well. And you'll also receive the marked up version of the policy. And you'll see the changes that were made in red. And then you'll also see the worksheet, the CIP worksheet as well. It was a great discussion by the board. They're very interested. I would say, just from staff's perspective, you did an excellent job selecting that board. They're very engaged and have great expertise. So it's a pleasure working with them.
Thank you, Amber. Melissa, did you have any other thought?
Thanks so much.
Okay. As was noted, Councilor Bettin is logged off, but Councilor Back, Nosworthy, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. I have two updates. The La Plata County Economic Development Alliance Board Meeting met. I sent you guys the PowerPoint, but for the public to know, they're working on the land use development code, the county code. And they met with their constituents and sent today, I believe it is, their second draft of feedback on that code. That's been a fair amount of work on the part of the alliance, bringing together those stakeholders for their input. The Remote Worker Recruitment Program, which is what was in the consent agenda today with the proposal to DOLA, they're going to focus on really trying to attract those lone eagles who might want to leave urban settings, focusing primarily on where we have direct flights. But we also discussed today that Google will be offline for some time, working offline. And that might be an attractive market for us also to be looking at as trying to attract a few people each year, workers who can work remotely. So that's going forward. The, still progressing on the Forest Health and the Environmental Fund Initiative and then La Posta, although that's taking longer in the age of COVID to keep that moving. And then I just wanted to make a quick update and maybe a challenge. So you know, Councilor Yusef and I, many of you might know that we did a tour of downtown Durango in a wheelchair, a Sunday, not this past Sunday, but the previous Sunday. We didn't go very far, probably because we couldn't, we couldn't push it that far. But we started down at 11th Street. We tried to look into the old post office, the county building there. We went down and tried to get into some buildings that we have responsibility for and saw some of the challenges there. We tried to, we went down to the Transit Center and tried to make it along the sidewalk that between 10th and 9th, that parallels Camino del Rio. And that was a real eye-opening experience. We couldn't cross Camino del Rio at 9th Street. We couldn't cross it because there were no curb cuts for a wheelchair. So we had to get out and push it. We then went across the 9th Street Bridge, up along the Animus River Trail, checked out the bathrooms, which might be difficult for someone in the park there, which might be difficult for someone to get into. We saw the challenges even on our own Animus River Trail of, if you're in a wheelchair or you're elderly, how that sustained grade might be difficult to navigate. And then finally, we, we braved it and we stayed in our wheelchair and we crossed Camino del Rio at 12th Street with the light. And I confess, my husband was out there to help stop traffic because we didn't have sufficient time to cross. The blinking light was not long enough. So that was a real eye-opener for me. I had tried to negotiate previous years when I had torn a meniscus. And so I had a sense of it, but I didn't realize how very inaccessible parts of the community can be. And I also, you know, I'm very much aware, serving on the multimodal, and Amber can talk to this. We have a, I think it's a $20 million ADA plan for improvements. And that's particularly around our bus stops and transit stops. It's not necessarily all of town. So as we think about how we use those dedicated dollars, I wanted to encourage, at a minimum, I wanted to encourage the Multimodal Board and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and maybe even the Open the Natural Lands Board to try the similar exercise, to get a firsthand experience of what it's like to negotiate our community and what kind of improvements we need to be making to ensure that we're inclusive, that we welcome a diverse population, including our disabled members of the community, and that we make equitable investments in accessibility for everyone. So that's my pitch. The Center for, the Southwest Center for Independence helped us get the wheelchairs. And I think they'd be more than happy to help educate others on our different advisory boards. So thank you. And a shout out to Councilor Yusef for joining me. Doing it alone would have been a little more intimidating and there were two of us out there and it was, we stopped cars. So thank you.
Well, if I can shout out back to you, Councilor Nosworthy, it was a really excellent experience for me. I had never done it. And I do recommend people try it. experience for me. I had never done it. And I do recommend people try it. And we were able to get our wheelchairs from Southwest Center of Independence. They coordinated it for us very well. And it was a good, it was a good experience. So I really appreciate you coordinating it and getting me out there, because it was extremely eye-opening, to say the least. And I believe that the street that you're talking about, parallel to Camino that we went down, was between 8th and 9th.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So that was the part that is in terrible disrepair. And, you know, you just, you cannot, it's, it's not accessible in that situation. And so it was a good experience. Can I add one more thing?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, because I forgot, as, I do want to give a shout out and a plug, if we can. It was in the Herald today, but to aidtoall.org, this is just a remarkable opportunity that is happening in our community, with a former CEO of Mercury, Matt Taylor, has put it together with many really great partners, and with the help of a lot of great local residents, to put this together, to really, truly get funding directly into the residents in our community that need it the most right now, recognizing that this is such a difficult time, and really wanting to forego the bureaucracy and just get, just have an immediate stream of funding to residents that need it most. The application went live today, aidtoall.org. People can donate to that, and it is 100% of the funds that are raised in La Plata County for this purpose will go to residents in La Plata County in need. And they will try to, they will be making those, I think, meeting weekly to make those distributions. And it's just a marvelous program. I feel really, really fortunate that we have the opportunity to be basically pushing this program out here in La Plata County and, and seeing how it does. I think we're very fortunate for that, to have people like Matt Taylor and his colleagues supporting it, making this kind of thing happen in Durango, in La Plata County.
Absolutely. Thank you, Melissa. And yeah, good, say that, say that, yeah, that link one more time.
It's aid, A-I-D, toall.org, O-R-G.
Aid to all, yeah. Thank you very much. Let's see, I guess it's me. So, yeah, my, you know, the library board has not met lately, and the airport commission has, has met and had our standard discussions. We're initiating improvements. We also are talking about how we handle the CARES funding, a little over $2 million worth of CARES funding that the airport received to distribute as we need it, or draw down, I should say, as we need it over the next period of time. As you can see, my, last week was consumed by tours of our two named finalists for city manager search, and that was Kevin Knudsen and Jose Madrigal. Kevin arrived last Monday and left on Friday. Jose arrived on Wednesday and left on Saturday. We were able to conduct interview, not interviews, we did not conduct interviews, actually, but we just gave them a tour of all the neighborhoods, all the diversity of our housing options, from everything from Twin Boots to Three Springs to Animus City to La Posta Road and everything in between, schools. They had conversations with the schools. They had conversations with realtors. And on Thursday, when both of them were here at the same time, we were able to conduct a series of facility tours, including the staff representing each of those facilities throughout the day. So Mayor Pretend Baxter joined me in that tour. Councilor Nosworthy had lunch with both candidates. Councilor Bettine had breakfast with both candidates. Councilor Youssef joined me at various points along the way. It was really, a really wonderful tour offering to those two candidates for the entire week, consisted of about three to, well, four intense days, pretty much from eight to, eight to five every day. So it was, I think, good for them. The purpose was to, you know, just allow them to see if it was in fact a good fit for them. And, and I believe they're left with a good feeling about our community, certainly the level of opportunity that we offered them to explore our community. And I can say that an update relative to that is unfortunately, we have had one of our named candidates receive, take another position, is what I have to tell the public this evening. And that position is, was with a county, I believe it's county manager in a location in Florida, which had to do with his family location and previous, previous job opportunity that he had there. It's where he was previously in a position with the city of Coral Springs, Florida. And so it's kind of a bit of a homecoming, I believe. Hope to hear more about how that decision got made from him. But at any rate, Jose Madrigal was another extremely qualified candidate that we felt very comfortable in his abilities. And we will move forward to see with council if we name any additional candidates, or if we present Jose to the community at large. And that'll be a decision that will be made later this week, as has been discussed. I'd like to say also, council met earlier today, that's why I'm becoming a little bit hoarse. We met for the purpose of determining potential candidates, applicants. We interviewed our applicants last week, and today decided on two candidates for for the Community Relations Commission. And I don't think it's probably appropriate to announce them publicly until they've been able to be contacted personally. But suffice to say that we have two appointees to that commission that will be announced later after we've had an opportunity to contact them directly. And hopefully, they will accept. With that, the last topic I have is, I have drafted a letter relative to the chief sign, and is a letter offering a process to the owners of the chief sign. And I'm basically getting consensus from council to forward that letter to them. I have some correspondence from council to make some assurances within that letter regarding the, the cost of a facilitated discussion around this issue. But if, if there's no other instructions to me from council this evening, or feel free to contact me via email tomorrow. And I would like very much to get that letter out, if that seems reasonable. So I see nods. It's not anything we would vote on, but I would like to certainly have council consensus before that letter goes out, signed by myself. Okay. And I hear that, and I'll expect either an email confirmation, or Barbara, if you have an opinion, let me know now, or in an email tomorrow. And I will contact Councilor Bettine as well, before that letter goes out, if that's acceptable. That's all I have for this evening. Good news, bad news, and everything in between. So thanks so much. Council has had an exhausting week and a half here, and look forward to continuing service. Thank you.